Let's see, I show about 7:00 PM Red Hook time, so shall we start this meeting? The tall knives and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is in us. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody. Welcome to the October 19th, 2015 Village Board Meeting, Village of Red Hook. You'll know it's dark outside and we're wearing sweaters, it's a few things have changed. We usually have these meetings at daylight and warm weather.
And it's snowed Sunday.
Yeah, we had some snow. So, the highway guys are probably chomping at the bit for some overtime, but that's a good thing. I'm back from some world travels, I think, I'd like to thank the Deputy Mayor for running a meeting or two there for me. I watched a little bit on Panda, he's learned from the best, he did a good job. And thanks to everybody else for cooperating with him.
Yes, we appreciate that very much.
All right, this is our spoken one.
We appreciate the brevity with which the Deputy Mayor can talk.
I don't know, does it mean my mind just brings complexity or confusion, I'm not sure which?
I take it.
But anyway, we start these and we enjoy these meetings, but they are business meetings as well, so what we would do is, when I came back from my trip, we jumped right into things and some of it involves some meetings and they would be, I think, the one I missed was the September 14th meeting, the regular meeting, and then there was a workshop on September 17th, which I was at, and then we threw in another workshop. This month, October, fell a certain way, we're a workshop and a holiday, we actually did a workshop before the meeting, so it asked the board to consider three sets of minutes, the September 14th regular monthly board meeting, which I know the Deputy Mayor probably went through to test for editing and accuracy, and I looked at September 17th and October 15th, and I would ask if there are any additions, alterations, or corrections. Hearing none, there's a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Let's see. What we could do is, it's the normal business part of the meeting, so quick call, would you like to give us the treasury report?
Account balances, general fund, $624,440.82. Water fund, $188,432.34. Trust and agency, $20,345.14. Materials management, $5,581.43. Petty cash, $27.85. Village green, $4,186.88. Hardscrabble, $3,254.49. Health insurance, $2,128.99. Of course, capital projects is zero, which is where it should be. Monthly expenses, general fund, $134,330.43. Water fund, $17,449.53. Trust and agency, $20,345.14. And materials management, $3,986.64.
Thank you. Cindy now looking at them today and she felt the balances were consistent, or should be, and looking on the positive side, which is good. Just looking them over. Anybody have any questions or thoughts? Is there a motion to accept treasury report as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor? Aye. Thank you. What we normally do with our supporting back sheets there are, it's always a good idea to look at where we are, because this is, Cindy, when you run this report, is that as of, those balances are as of Friday or Monday or?
Yes.
Friday?
Friday.
Okay. It's always good to test some of the bigger lines for percent of the year and percent of budget spent, it's a good exercise to keep up.
And, let's see. I have a question.
Sure.
I noticed on bingo licenses.
The what licenses?
The bingo licenses, the inventory. We're paying $4.23.
Income?
Yeah.
I don't understand what your question is.
Well, usually bingo licenses are by the week.
No. That's an income line, and that's what they bring in. Very few people would play in bingo anymore.
But don't they purchase a license for every?
Once a year.
Once a year?
Mm-hmm.
What line are you on there, Steve? What line? What line are you on, just like?
A2540. So they purchase it by the year?
They purchase a license to the state. State wagering authority, once a year, that's $975. I think we keep 240 of it, the rest goes to the state. And this $4 and something is, the bingo that they play each week, we get a small percentage, and that percentage is shrinking.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, let's see. I could go next with police report, but Sergeant's here tonight, so Pat, you want to read the report?
Perfect. How's everybody doing?
Good.
This is the September report.
Good, Pat, why don't you come up from, will you?
Sure. So this is the September report. Total incidents, that's just calls for service, is 371, 256 in the Village of Red Hook, 110 in the Town of Red Hook, and five in the Village of Tivoli. Total traffic, UTTs, 119. 91 in the Village of Red Hook, Town of Red Hook, 28. Arrests, 14. Seven in the Village of Red Hook, and seven in the Town of Red Hook. You guys also got my email the other day about the stolen vehicle we had in the Village of Red Hook. We did find that in the City of Kingston, with City of Kingston PD's help on Sunday afternoon. Obviously, the felony grand larceny is still pending, we're still investigating to find out, obviously, who stole it, but our vehicle was dumped in the City of Kingston, and then another vehicle was stolen from that, so it is, so if you guys do see it around town, anybody else, welcome to here in Panda, it had been returned to the owner, so we obviously did our process, and now the investigation is continuing, but he has the vehicle back, so I've gotten a lot of phone calls today that they stole the stolen vehicle, but it's because the owner has it back. So, I just wanted to put that out there quickly. Yeah. Also, I do, I do watch some of the meetings, not here all time, obviously, but I do watch them on YouTube, which I think is a pretty good resource to see them. I know, I watched last meetings, and there were some things brought up about full patrols and etc. like that, so a lot of times, you see security checks, so they're, the full patrol security checks are almost kind of the same thing, so like Kate tonight is doing security checks, which is on full patrol. So, some will put it as full patrol, most of them put it as security checks because they're doing business checks. But while doing business checks, they're walking, so it's kind of incorporated both. I saw there was some concerns about that, so I just wanted to clear that up. I don't want to put security check as a full patrol, because if the business comes in and say, hey, my business broke into, I'm going to be looking for security checks, not a full patrol. So, that kind of goes hand in hand, but it obviously is, is going on, and do you have any questions for me?
I don't.
Thank you.
Let's see. As far as other parts of my piece here, personnel world, we did replace our part-time person that left us about six weeks ago, we have another part-time clerk in Cindy's office, and it looks like things are working out nicely.
Yes, they are.
So it was good, we went through a little stretch there, we were squeezing our assets and trying to find-
Long stretch.
Trying to find a proper fit there, and it worked out, I think we did the right thing, so that's good. Let's see, Mr. Trustee Trapp, you ready to talk on planning zoning and various?
You betcha. You betcha. I would like to just start by saying that I appreciate the help from everyone, everybody on the board here that kicked in with the block grant submission that went in. Cindy Brent, Ed, thank you so much, your extra eyes and all that sort of stuff, makes it, you know, you get a little beep in the process, and it's nice for somebody else to kind of see what you've sort of glossed over, so hopefully, we have a good opportunity. We're looking for about 94 grand to put in some, clean up the four corners up here, make them completely ADA compliant. We're going to try and put some signaled crosswalks here to make it a little safer. Brent and I were talking earlier, right before the meeting, that especially now, when it's starting to get dark a little earlier, it's very, very difficult to see pedestrians, and it doesn't seem like the cars are very interested in stopping for you in any event, so, you know, if we can, if we can signalize it a little bit, bring some attention to it, theoretically, this particular rapid flashing beacon that we're looking to get some money for, brings compliance up between 80 and 90 percent for stopping, so I'd be very appreciative if we could pull that one off, I think it would be good for the village, very good. We're looking for four locations and, and the four corners, cleaning up the handicap ramps, which would be fantastic. Dutchess County Planning Federation, President of the Board of Directors, we have a meeting coming up, I believe it's October 28th. The county is going to bring out some changes, they're going to change the nature of the review process, we're going to try and kind of make it a little more compact, and John Clark's going to be there to, to roll out some new Greenway information, which will be kind of cool, I think it'll first substantive changes in very long time, and it'll be come with upon each municipality to then, like, adopt, you know, or sort of endorse those pieces, so we'll get all that legislation down the line, and we're going to, we're going to tell John Clark, you know, this isn't his official retirement, but it'll be the last time to collectively, a lot of us seeing that meeting, so we're going to say goodbye to John a little bit at that point, so it's going to be tough to, to replace him, you know, as most of you guys know, you know, he's been there since, you know, since before you and I got on the boards, he was there, so he's like a sort of a fixture down there at county, I think they're all going to miss him. Let's see here, and then we're going to, we haven't quite settled it, but we have a meeting coming up, a class coming up in November for the Planning Federation, and it's going to be a continuation of the SEACR, the two guys that put it together and presented it last time are going to come back and expand on the SEACR process a little bit more, and how the new forms are working, and certain things that they may have changed at that point. And in terms of the Village Red Hook Building Department, we had eight building permits issued this past month, four CVOs, 11 certificates of compliance issued, and conducted four municipal searches, no orders to remedy, stop orders, court appearances, fire inspections, or complaints, and the planning board had no agenda, and the ZBA had no agenda. That's kind of going around, everything's slowing up now, so, and the money tendered at the Building Department for September was $1,000 even. That's all I have now, Ed, we'll get into some other stuff a little later when you bring those things up.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Just looking at that $1,000 even happen, let's see, it's kind of a neat round number, but it looks right. Okay, I think what we'll do, Jen, are you ready to go with your responsibilities?
Finally recovered from hardscrabble day. Finally got over that cold. It was a huge success, I mean, this, every year we pull it off somehow, and it's just, it astounds me every single year. So thank you to the Hardscrabble Committee, myself, Ed, Matt Donahue, Doug Struinsky, Sue McCann, and Emily Trapp. Music was provided by local musicians, and our headliner was Jackie Green. This is a day that is primarily sponsored by outside businesses, so a huge thank you to the giant list of sponsors, because we could not do it without them, so, thank you. And we have the date for next year, I forget what it was. Oh, wow.
15, 16.
Something like that, it was early, I think it was the 16.
So who's playing?
I know, right? We're working on it. We have Village Halloween, on Halloween itself, it will be Saturday, October 31st, from 12 to 2 in the parking lot here, there will be arts and crafts, pumpkin painting, farmer's market, and trick or treating at our merchants, everyone seems to like that event. And we just figured out our winter festival will be Sunday, December 6th, from 4 to 5:30. There was an incorrect date in our newsletter, so just make sure that it is, you have it down, as Sunday, December 6th. And we're holding, excuse me, we are holding it in conjunction with Historic Red Hook's Old Dutch Christmas, which will be held at the Elmendorf from 1 to 4 that same day. And then, a quick note about two events that are happening, but we're not directly in charge of, this Sunday, Paws Dog Boutique, which is one of our new local merchants, are presenting Halloween, which is an event for dogs and their humans. This is this Sunday, October 25th, from 11 to 2, it includes a dog costume parade and trick or treating for dogs throughout the local merchants. At a previous meeting, we had agreed to close the parking lot for them, or part of the parking lot, they have since asked that we close part of Prince Street, they have a karate demonstration coming and parade lineup, so they would like the road closed from 11 to 1.
Going to the karate?
I don't, you know, the emails that I have sent in my life about dog excrement being cleaned up and stuff, it's, it's kind of hilarious, but so I, there have a bunch of vendors coming and karate demos, that they said would be easiest for them to have the street, and also for the safety of the dogs, they didn't want stuff, so I'd like to make a motion if I have to do that, to that, we close that Prince Street for, at least from 11 to 1, if we could do it a little bit longer, that's fine, but they did say they only needed it from 11 to 1.
Are they still using the parking lot?
They're still using the parking lot, though we'll have vendors set up, but I guess they're just concerned with all the dogs and, and cars going down Prince Street, and also, I guess that's where they wanted the karate demos to be.
Would that be all of Prince Street, or down to the?
Probably just to like where our door is, is my guess, or like to where we are closing off.
Let me just, I'll second motion, just so we can have proper format.
Okay.
So as far as discussion, I was copying it on the emails too, and Jay, your question, it's just the front half, like, to our back end.
To our back story. Sure. Okay.
I think it's a good idea, sometimes it keeps a little bit of traffic up at the back, what we do is essentially close the same part of the parking lot as we do for the farmer's market, step front, so you really don't lose that many spaces, and they're out there by two, so we're not impacting the night restaurant trade or anything, and cutting down that street helps with kids and dogs and different things, so what we can do is, I just wanted the board to hear it, and I don't see a problem with it, we'll do the same thing for Red Hook Halloween.
Right.
It's just a short timeline, and then all it really needs is the highway guys to drop off a few more signs and cones, so we can do it right, but I'll be here to help, and you can help us, so. Jen put it in the form of motion, I would recommend that we let them do that, and any other discussion? All favor? Aye. Jen, anything else?
Yeah, just real quick, another event that's great, it's coming up, the Second Annual Chocolate Festival will be, you just go "mmm" down there?
"Mmm." "I heard 'mmm.'"
"Mmm." That'll be Saturday, November 7th. That event's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, involves chocolate vendors, tastings, and demonstrations, and that's village-wide, so that's that. And then for materials management, for the month of September, we sold $3,412.50 in garbage tags, we paid out $1,196.70. We had 11.28 tons of garbage and 6.93 tons of single stream recycling. Matt Solahan?
Jen?
Yes.
Steve had produced a spreadsheet-
Yeah, this, this is-
That seems to be, you know, more based on a fiscal year rather than the calendar.
Right, when I pulled up to do this, this is what had come up under my most recent, so clearly I just updated the incorrect one, so I will make sure that I update the correct one, and-
I mean, the numbers won't change.
Right, it's just the different format, so I will, I will make sure that that is updated correctly, but this is what had come up in my, because they're all named the same thing, you know, basically, so I was like, oh, okay, so I will make sure that that is changed for next month.
But on the numbers, like she said, whether it's calendar, fiscal year, it's like we're averaging, if you take the calendar year, 3,700 tag sales per month, which is decent.
Yeah, it's, it's all pretty.
Okay. And I know we have still a strong recycling percentage, some of us might have seen in the article in the New York Times, essentially questioning recycling on the economic side, but it's still got so many values on the environmental quality side, and our residents do a great job with our system, so we'll keep promoting recycling too. Thanks, Jen. One thing, in the realm of Jen, today I was talking with the film production crew, and I decided to update the board, the actor James Franco is self-funding an indie, and they're asking to use our place as a scene, a site, and we've done this in the past with other film crews, and we like the energy, we like the idea, but we can't gift them, so we have to have a rate that we charge them, so I've asked them to send us some documents, proof of insurance, and also what they intend to use and need at the site, what they need us to do at the site here. Essentially, they want to use the courtroom upstairs and the police offices to work it up. They did say that if they use any policemen as extras, they would pay the extra fee according to the screen union, whatever it is. They would defrock, like, clearly identifiable photos and nations, it would be some other police department, wouldn't be the Red Hook Police Department, but they do have sound crews, light crews, and different things, so I told them to email us the specimen contracts, and I named the price that I thought we should get, which is comparable to what we've gotten from the German film crew years ago. It's a nice little piece of income for us, we can use outside of, you know, it doesn't, we don't budget for film shoots here when we do our budgets, but, and I was showing Jen, it's a little exciting, some contacts I have in the world, they said, James Franco, I don't know all these actors by name, I've never been that good at that, but it's also starring Christian Slater and Molly Ringwald. I don't think they will be here, but Slater, excuse me, Franco's supposed to be here for the piece that they shoot here, so, so it'll be kind of exciting, and they do ask, yeah, I said, with their crews and their work trucks, we might have to find a way to park them a little bit, but they want to start real early in the morning and different things, so it'll be exciting, because everybody feel like it'd be fun, I think it'd be good.
Why not?
Staff has to walk around some boxes and look at actors and actresses.
I think we can handle it, I think so.
Christian Slater, okay for you?
Yeah. It works.
The German crew, they provide lunch for the-
Yeah, right, I asked them about that, they do have cavers, and so I suggested that they use somebody local, but I think they already have a caterer that's following the enterprise already, so anyway, it kind of was-
And we'll be invited to lunch, right, for our generosity.
Yeah, I think they let us crash, last time we crashed their lunch, it was, they want to shoot it October 28th, so they need to, like, 10, 9 days.
So do you ask them for a cameo?
Just one day?
Yeah, it would take one day, yeah. So they're supposed to shoot me an email fast.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah. You don't have court that, maybe during the day, right, so it's, but it's just kind of an interesting, exciting little tidbit.
No, there is no court.
Okay.
You said October?
Yeah, 2/8.
That's next week.
Yeah, like nine days, whatever it is.
Oh, wow.
I guess those indies work fast, and, but they are trying to claim a little bit of poverty, saying, it's an indie, they don't have a big budget, but I don't believe that's a little-
He is James Franco.
Mm-hmm.
He's on like Toyota commercials or something, he can have a little coin.
But, anyway, let's see, let's see if we've gotten through. Mr. Dark, do you want to go on water and facility there?
Sure. The water treatment plant treated 6,761,000 gallons of water during the month of September. The average daily tree volume was 225,000 gallons, in September of 14, the plant treated 7,282,000 gallons of water, and an average daily volume of 242,000. This represents a decrease of 17,000 gallons per day. During the month of September, the plant used 75 gallons of hyperchlorite solution at an average rate of 2.5 gallons per day. Three water samples were sent to Smith Laboratory in Hyde Park for bacteriological testing, all, all three were returned with negative result. As part of, as I stayed last month, I am continuing to update our records of key maintenance that we need, and it's a ongoing project. Thank you.
The heat came on this morning.
Well, that's a good thing, well places, heat didn't come on.
And just go back to water, Steve, I believe this is the first month where our computers were actually doing an automated read at the same time of day for the entire month, so from this year to last year, in the September readings, we actually used about 500,000 gallons less in the month of September, and-
Right.
Basically, the, the average day plus the max day flood that we are always concerned with, now that, that the readings are done both manually and automated at the same time every day, this is the first, first month where we have a full month reading of the automated ones.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. I don't have that data, so.
Anything else?
No, that was it.
All right. Brent, you ready to work on your various reports?
Oh, yeah. I'll start with the Village Green Committee Month Report, the current balances of the Village Greens related budget accounts. As of September 30th, artist follows community beautification, we have $3,788.53 shade tree contractual, $6,551.27. So I believe the, the cost for the tree removal has been factored into this, so we did pretty good this, so far this year on that. The Village Green checking account, we have $4,186.88, and that is an increase, we did have someone purchase a bench that will be installed in the village this month, actually, so that'll drop once we pay for the bench and everything. The Village Green Committee meeting was held on September 22nd at the Red Hook Village Building. The Village Green Committee is conducting, or planning a seminar with the Red Hook Public Library. The workshop will describe tree health issues, what to look for to determine the health of a tree, and proper tree planting and pruning techniques. We'll actually be planting a bare root tree and demonstrating on a prune a tree properly. We've invited a lot of people from the Cow Tree Commission, Rhinebeck Tree Commission, to the Greens Committee, Bard College, different aspects, and general public, so anyone interested in learning how to plant a bare root tree, and learning about tree health and how to prune a tree properly. This workshop will be led by arborist, certified arborist Angelo Shambari, who's from Integral Tree Landscape, and so we'll meet here at the Village Building on Saturday, November 24th, at 2:30 for a quick presentation on tree health, and then wanted the streets and plant a tree and do some pruning, so that should be good. 16 trees have been ordered from Shipto's Nursery for the annual fall planting, and we'll have trees planted at various locations, including at the St. Paul's Lutheran Church, mobile station on West Market Street, there'll be six at the municipal parking lot, one at the Memorial Park, and several on Fraley Street, and also do some tree pruning on Fraley and Church Street. So the fall planting is tentatively scheduled for Saturday, November 7th, and this is the same day as the Chocolate Festival, and will start at 9 o'clock, I believe the Chocolate Festival starts at 11, so it should be done before major events start at the Chocolate Festival, and of course, every, every year we do have a luncheon that's provided by volunteers for the people who plant, and that will take place at the Red Hook Town Hall, and then Desert to follow at the Chocolate Festival, so we hope everyone can volunteer and come forward and help plant trees. The Kipsey Dutchess County Transportation Council, Dutchess County Public Transit, has secured funding to provide transit amenities, which includes bicycle racks, benches, and other amenities, two minutes, penalties, and no charge. For benches, they will reimburse up to $575 per bench. The village has submitted a request to replace all 11 benches at Richard Abraham's Memorial Park, and a proposal has been submitted by Parkadex, which are the people who did supply us with the benches, the 23 that we currently have for the plan, so we do have our, our list in, and it was due on the 15th, so we'll see if we get some of that money back, anyway. There's limited money that the transit, Dutchess County Public Transit has to dole out, and we're hoping- we're hopeful at least we'll get something for that. And there are apparently two bench locations remaining without dedication plaques of the original twenty-three benches, and they are at Trusco Bank and at the Emporium on South Broadway. Village residents may purchase a plaque for one hundred twenty-five dollars, and the proceeds from the sale will be used for future village enhancement projects. People interested can contact the clerk's office and she'll get to me and we'll take care of you. The Village Highway Department is currently picking up the lawn debris and brush every first and third Monday of the month. They will probably be starting with their leaf pickup this week or next week. Residents are reminded to place lawn debris, brush and grass clippings in separate piles curbside before the scheduled pickup. And again, brush piles keep them no bigger than six feet by six feet by six feet with trees and tree limbs and branches no longer than, no larger than eight inches in diameter. And please do not include tree trunks and debris from tree maintenance performed by private contractors and/or tree maintenance companies. In light of Sunday's snowstorm, the village's snow ordinance will be in effect from November first through March of two thousand sixteen. No parking is permitted on village streets from eleven PM to six o'clock AM and on New York State highways, which are Route one ninety-nine or Route nine, from two AM to six AM during the same period. When snow or ice removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any other responding law enforcement agency. And costs associated with vehicle towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. The owner, occupant of every building or lot in the village within a jointed sidewalk shall remove snow and ice within twenty-four hours of a snowstorm. And at the discretion of the village board, the highway department will remove snow and ice left unclear at a cost of two dollars per linear foot. The Townsend Street catch basins and drainage repair and the repaving of Fifth Street from South Broadway to Thompson Street were completed during the month of September. And also catch basin repair replacements occurred on Kent Road and on West Market Street, and they were, they're completely done right there at this point. The catch basin that we isolated for Church Street Extension will wait until spring or when the final cost of the previous projects have been calculated and reimbursement received from the DOT. These street improvements were reviewed and approved by the village board on July thirtieth, and the projects will be reimbursed from the, from the Consolidated Local Street and Highway Improvement Program or CHIPS. Ed and I attended the Poughkeepsie Duchess County Transportation Council's Transportation Plan Workshop from Burke Duchess County on September twenty-first at the Hyde Park Town Hall. The workshop was organized for the public to share their ideas regarding the transportation needs and priorities in the areas of Hyde Park, Rhinebeck, Red Hook and Tivoli. The DOT issued a MO on September tenth to remind municipalities to update their portions of the local highway inventory. Mileage reported to the local highway inventory is used to calculate consolidated local highway, street and highway improvement programs, and we did complete that and signed and that was sent in already. That's done. The New York State Route one ninety-nine east of Wilper Flats Road and west of Hicksville Road near the town of Mylan is expected to be closed beginning ten o'clock PM on Friday, October twenty-third, which is...
Four days.
Four days. Then reopen at six AM Monday on November second. The road closure is necessary to replace a deteriorated Walder Culver. A signal detour will be in place that will direct Route one ninety-nine traffic to use Mylan Hill Road, Turkey Hill Road and Jackson Corner Road to navigate the closure. Scrap metal was sold on June sixteenth, and checks from the scrap metal recycling vendor were received on September first. And then we got three hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-nine cents on the first and another check on September third for a hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-three cents. These amounts will be added to the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen income line. The total revenue generated for this fiscal year is four hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of two thousand seven, eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-six cents has been generated. Proceeds from this program go towards the purchase of tools and equipment for the village highway, water and materials management departments. Anyone interested in donating scrap metal can contact the highway department at seven five eight eight six hundred or the village clerk's office, and the highway personnel will assist property owners by picking up their scrap metal. It's good to see a little income coming in.
What we hear, bad news though?
Bad news is that cost of a resale value of scrap metal is going down. So we've also been contacted by the vendors that we sell it to that were now going to be charged, I believe, a seventy-five dollars with the dumpster for them to pick up, so we're going to hold it as long as possible and hope the costs will go up. But we're still, we're still accepting scrap metal.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
I just remembered, Botini lost a state contract for fuel. So I have to get on, find out who... I think I've been told through the grapevine, it's nobody around here, they're way up towards Albany, which I'm sure there'll be big delivery fees with that, so yeah.
It's hard to say.
I'll check on it.
The intermunicipal task force and Red Hook Infrastructure Month Reports. The Red Hook Sewer Project meetings were held on September fourth and twenty-fifth at the Red Hook Village Building, and we reviewed the required submissions to the USDA rural development for the initial application for rural development loans and grants. And we did send in the, what we thought was the last item, but there were a couple more that we did address. And we're documenting all that, I'm not going to read all the resolutions and documents that we signed, but we're, are keeping a record, and this primarily for our audits, when we're audited at the end of the year for these projects, and they want to know what transpires at these meetings. So a lot of paperwork, and we're hoping to have a determination soon as far as what kind of funding will be available for the sewer project. Jim McGyver of CT Mail and myself attended a workshop entitled Assessing Economic Development Administration Funding at SUNY Orange in Newburgh on September eighteenth. This workshop was organized and sponsored by the Office of Senator Kirsten Gillibrand and the Hudson Valley Regional Council, and reviewed the requirements for submitting funding applications to the USDA. The village submitted the initial application on June twelfth of two thousand fifteen. If the village is unsuccessful, which we were this year, we just got our letter a couple, a couple weeks ago, for consideration for this funding cycle, a new and revised application can be submitted quarterly, so we're beginning the preparations to do another application for submission. Working with the EDA, there's one person based out of Philadelphia that's responsible for New York State and the state of Pennsylvania, and we're trying to get him to either come up here and help us out and see what we can do to better qualify for that grant. It's a, it's a big grant award. The proposed Village of Red Hook Sewer District will include the entire village. The proposed sewer system will be located in the general business district and parts of the neighborhood mixed use district, from the north end of Old Post Road and North Broadway, extending south to the Red Hook Commons and Emporium, and from the east at Tower Road, East Market Street, extending west to Linden Avenue. The proposed step system includes three hundred twenty-eight point six benefit units, which I guess is really two hundred seventy-seven benefit units from what we've been seeing from the way it was assessed from the Environmental Facilities Corporation. And the treatment facilities will be located and will incorporate the existing treatment plant at Red Hook Commons. The estimated total capital cost exclusive of the existing Red Hook Commons land and treatment plant is four point six million dollars. The Red Hook Water Projects meetings were held on September fourth and twenty-fifth at the Red Hook Village Building. We updated the property liability, employee dishonesty and workers' compensation certificates. A lot more forms were done. We did submit a complete application for grant funding considerations to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation and the New York State Department of Health on September third. If awarded, the two million dollar award will be used to offset the USDA rural development loan and debt obligation for the water infrastructure improvement project phase two. The grant sources from the two thousand fifteen Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Program. An amendment to Phase Two bid documents was issued on September twenty-fifth specifying the glass line storage tank as justified by the USDA rural development. We did have thirty-one bid documents that were picked up by prospective prime general contractors, prime electric contractors and suppliers for Phase Two of the Village Water System Improvement Project as of September thirtieth. We did open those bids on September thirtieth, and there were, I think we'll go through that later, later in this meeting, so I'll let Ed take care of, at least explain what, what the results were and the next step forward. On the two thousand fifteen Community Development Block Grant, my pre-advertising bid set was delivered to Duchess County Department of Planning on September fourth. They approved it on September twenty-fifth, and the tentative schedule, we did advertise for the bids starting on, I guess tomorrow will be the first day, that will be advertised in front of the bids. We're looking, the bids are due for December eighteenth, a little later than one o'clock PM. And we'll also open the bids on December eighteenth, April fourth, two thousand sixteen. Anticipating construction begin pending approval from Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, or adherence to the US Department of Palisades Urban Development's requirements. And on August first, we're assuming that there'll be substantial completion of the project. And the two thousand fifteen Community Development Block Grant Award will be used to install ADA compliant sidewalks in front of and on the east side of the Red Hook Firehouse and reconstruct sidewalks on the west side of South Broadway in front of Culver, Laundry and the Dance Center. On the two thousand sixteen Community Development Block Grant, trustee Trapp prepared the application for the two thousand sixteen application. We did receive an eligibility determination on September eighteenth from the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, and we did submit on the fourteenth, I believe, fifteenth of October. So well, again, I think we'll, we're waiting to see when, if we get the award, and then we'll go through the process of our Qs for engineering services and so forth, so Jay has already explained what the intent of the, of the award will be. The task force met on September fourth, eleventh, eighteenth and twenty-fifth at the Red Hook Town Hall. We reviewed the draft letter to landowner and the draft fact sheet to be sent to Red Hook Town residents who may be affected by the proposed historic structures and district zoning regulations. And there are two meetings scheduled for those interested and also specific for those who'd be involved with the new zoning, with the proposed zoning, for to listen to their comments and on some of the provisions within the zoning. The first one's scheduled for Thursday, October twenty-ninth at seven thirty, and Thursday, November twelfth, two fifteen, seven thirty, and both of those at the Red Hook Town Hall. And one more report, the Red Hook Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are liaisons on the committee, and the EDC met on September ninth and twenty-third at the Red Hook Village Building, and we reviewed the status of Discover Red Hook Hudson Valley website and the Facebook page. Discover Red Hook Cardicals are currently being sold, and various businesses throughout the village that suggest the retail price is two dollars and fifty cents, and these will, the proceeds will go toward the future, future EDC projects. An updated business list is currently being prepared. Programs, certifications and project updates will be forwarded to those businesses included on this list. Possible businesses, business uses for the soon to be vacant CVS were also discussed. Attempts continue to discuss possibilities with the property owner. SC fifteen Sculpture Expo fifteen upcoming events and programs were presented by Rita Gentile of Red Hook Can and the Red Hook Chamber of Commerce, encouraged the EDC to properly register for listing with Duchess County Tours. And we discussed plans for the Red Hook and the Chocolate Festival, again scheduled for November seventh, and discussed the status of the Village of Red Hook Water and Sewer Infrastructure Projects. The Community Preservation Fund and Farm and Land Protection Advisory Committee was I'm a member of, there were no meetings held during the month of September. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of September thirtieth is one hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. The Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, I'm also a member of that, there were no GRC meetings held during the month of September. Town of Red Hook Villages of Red Hook and Tivoli Shared Services Committee, both Ed and I are village representatives and members of that mini committee, there were no Shared Highway Services Committee, Committee meetings held during the month of September. Ed and I did attend the Second Annual Shared Services Summit at the Poughkeepsie Grand Hotel on September twenty-eighth. Close to eighty local, county and state officials took part in a roundtable discussion to brainstorm potential shared services or consolidation opportunities to reduce the cost to government. Dr. Mildred Warner, professor in the Department of City and Regional Planning at Cornell University facilitated the discussion. And what we did find out at this summit was that the villages of Red Hook and Tivoli and the Town of Red Hook were awarded an eighty-one thousand two hundred fifty dollar grant to develop and implement standardized procedures for administration, asset management, inventorying and development of a shared purchasing program. This grant was awarded by Duchess County to implement the recommendations from the Highway Shared Services Study, and is anticipated, is anticipated to save around sixty thousand dollars annually.
That would be for all?
For all three municipalities. The Town of Red Hook Trails Plan Steering Committee, I'm a member of that, there were no committee meetings held during the month of September. A draft plan is expected for review by the Steering Committee sometime late October. This draft plan will include recommendations from the residents of Red Hook, Tivoli, Barn and the Bard College Communities. In Red Hook Together, we did meet on, in September, both Ed and I are members of that. A lot of stuff happening with the different organizations, Red Hook Together, Bard College, Center for Pacific Engagement, Artsman Hudson, Red Hook Can, the Red Hook Area Chamber of Commerce, the Northern Duchess Community Coalition, Parent Teacher Student Association, the Red Hook Public Library, Bard International Students and Bard College for Center for Pacific Engagement, all participated and talked about their various programs. The Library's Transforming Communities, Public Innovators Cohort, I'm a member of that, with four other members in the community. We are wrapping up our eighteen-month training session through the Harwood Institute, and we did have our last coaching call on September tenth. And also the library cohorts from Columbus, Wisconsin, Spokane, Washington and Red Hook will be conducting a webinar for the American Libraries Association and the Harwood Institute. And this webinar will be used to offer guidance and provide training to interested participants to learn about community engagement using the Harwood principles developed by the eight, American Libraries Association, Libraries Transforming Communities cohort. So we're making some headway getting Red Hook out there. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Brett. As usual, a lot of data, a lot of detail in there.
There's more that will be posted on...
Couple things jump out at me. Today I talked to a reporter from Poughkeepsie Journal on that eighty-one thousand two hundred dollar next phase, implementation phase on the Highway Shared Services. So it should be something out in the press, I'm not sure when her story's coming out, but gave her a background on phase one, we'll call it, and then second, second grant amount, what we intend to do. Right now, it's a little bit interesting in that the villages both have their boards and mayors seated, where the town is going through elections, so the current town supervisor is essentially lame duck right now, so she's well into the, what, the last ten, ten weeks of her tenure there, so we'll probably, that's set up our meetings with the new supervisor and new board members at that level. But these, this program does supersede particular administration, it's a concept that, that bridges a person, it's, it's between the municipalities, so it's not a worry, but it's just, we'll have to see who gets in there and what happens. The other thing, again, just breaking out a lot of information there, I thought, first we jump into sewer, regular business... First, we jump into sewer, regular business. If you look at your agendas there, item one, maybe Robert could jump up two, but we have a lot of legal technical things that Brett talks about, and some of them have real timelines. So we do need to start positioning the village to declare its intention to be lead agency. It's a secret process. We're gathering up the resolution and working on it quite hard. We do need to include in that the EAF, Environmental Assessment Form, and the engineers and lawyers working on it. It's in draft format, in my opinion, needs a little more work, so I'm not going to actually move into the resolution other than to stay. We're near it. I think it'll happen at our November, I think it's also the nineteenth. What's our next regular board meeting?
Seven.
Seven. Sounds a little early.
Ninth.
Okay. But the good part is, these are real steps. We hear Brett recite technical things, the four point nine million, zero percent interest loan that we have from EFC, the fact that he's working to look for a lot of acronyms there, EDA grants, we're looking to the state for some grant funding help in other forms, looking at different options to make this the most affordable product we can capitalize. And it's coming to fruition. The EFC window is a two-year window from much like twentieth or so of two thousand and fifteen, so we have to fit certain timelines, sort of a Gantt chart thing we're working on, but we'll put that resolution, we'll get the draft EAF, because I want the whole board to see the EAF and pull, it's a thirteen-page document with a lot of checklist and boxes and info, and I just want everybody on the same page before we actually vote that as part and composite of the intention to declare lead agency. So any work on that. What that does, item number two on the agenda, we don't, we will not need to set the public hearing. Our, my intention is, as we circulate for lead agency, have a public hearing in a certain timeline after that, just to be up in front at our regular meetings and have it all out there. If anybody is objecting from a secret perspective, whatever, they might have a chance to come in, but.
So can we still set the public hearing date, December fourteenth or November ninth?
No, because.
The timeline wouldn't work out.
You need a full thirty days.
Yeah, we need thirty days to respond to the circulating order.
So we did it November ninth. That wouldn't, that would be, December ninth would be the thirty days, right? So we could still do it on the fourteenth meeting, the public hearing?
I don't think so, because we wouldn't have, if the EAF formally approved by this board.
It would be on the ninth of November, right?
The December meeting is when?
The fourteenth.
So there is thirty days in between there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I've got a calendar, somebody else?
Let's do somebody.
I don't know, I think I'd rather have the EAF in my hand signed and what's changing on you in your mind is be, instead of, it'd be January, what we say.
It'd be the same thing, it's just, you know, what had happened is that, it's still the thirty days, so we were trying to get these things at a regular trustee meeting, so it's on Panda. So we're still within the thirty, or outside the thirty-day period, or thirty days would have gone by if we do declare the intent, make a reason to declare if we had the intention of being lead agent, right, we send that out that day or the next day, that thirty-day period, we'd still subscribe to the proper length of time.
You could, you could announce it at the November meeting, too.
That's true.
So you don't, you don't have to.
The day would be the same, December fourteenth, as our December regular trustee meeting.
I just think we're playing close, if our regular meeting is November ninth, then what's it going to take, a day or two to get it out circulating? What is it stamped out, stamped into then? What's the thirty-day timeline?
The letter stated.
Dated letter, yeah.
So we would be there, it'd be the same date that, if we wait now, or what, the nineteenth? Or the, the ninth?
I just feel uncomfortable not having the EAF finalized.
We'll do it on the ninth, then. We can do it on the ninth.
Yeah, I'd rather.
I mean, the fourteenth will be the same date, but.
Yeah. Have the one in my hand done and, you know, approved by all of us and still getting the cart before the horse. Thank you, though. Let's see, so those are sewer-related projects. Let's jump to water while we have the engineer here. Again, from Brett's reports, we hear the details of Phase Two. And what he was alluding to was, we did open bids on October second. We had about thirty-one packets go out. Some were to prime general contractors, those were prime electrical contractors, which is basically the way we had to bid it. We opened up, and Robert will give us some details, but there were five primes and three general, three electricals came in. And we had presumed on market conditions and prices that we would need to have a budget of three point eight million for this, including engineering. Unfortunately, the bids came in four, five, to seven, seven, at a million dollar, four point five, and four, seven, or seven, seven range, which is obviously a problem. We're just not going to spend that much money. And so we've had some sessions since then. We workedshopped a little bit the other, you said with last Thursday, the end of board. And essentially, what one does is look at what's in the project and what's, when the price is fair, and what do we have to do to make it so we can afford the project? The overall goal is to get new pipes in the ground in the southwest quadrant of the village, the older quadrant. Our dream was to also recap in a true permanent sense, the street cover, so we weren't looking at gaps and patches in the streets. We think we have a way to overcome that without fully rebuilding road beds from twelve inches down and up. So what we're doing is talking about striking a lot of that roadwork, and then on top of that, we do know that the line running down Benner Road to what's called Zipster in the village and the southern part of Smith are newer lines. They're still in the late eighties, so they're thirty-ish years old, but we feel we can leave them outside the project and just get at the really older lines. So the engineers have been working pen and pencil and putting some spreadsheets together, and our goal is to bring the project in down where we think we can afford it. So Robert, maybe you could fill us in a little bit, but the option would be to rebid and go with that. But part of it, we can, we need to award, the electrical did come in, and that was an acceptable number as far as everybody's concerned. Maybe, do you want to read the electrical bids out loud and?
Right, so the summary of the bids was delivered to the village board on October fifteenth with a recommendation letter. And as Ed just mentioned, those general contractors, we got five bids, and they were high. So our recommendation is to rebid it, which we discussed at the workshop meeting. But for the electrical contract, those three, which is a separate prime contract, there's three bids were received, and it ranged from one hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars to one hundred forty-two thousand. And with the low bidder being gross electric. We were familiar with gross, and we, you know, I talked to their project manager, put the bid together, and they were comfortable with the bid, had no reservations about doing the work. They're qualified, attrition, and so we were recommending to the board that they award the contract to gross. The electrical part of the work can proceed timeline-wise independently from the general contract.
Can you explain why?
Yeah, so the, the work in the electrical contract obviously takes place at the water pump, and we're replacing control panels to the pumps. So that work is completely independent of the tank work and the site work, obviously, that's taking place in the streets. So again, they can, they can go in parallel trains there. So since we have acceptable bids for the electrical, bids are, bids have been received, recommend you award it, and we can proceed with that prime contract.
So on the agenda there, we have award Phase Two Water, so he cited the name and the bid amount, and it seemed clear to me that they can work, their work is really not directly allowed in the street construction work, so. Part of it is also prepping that site for the new storage tank and so forth that's in the general contractor piece of the number. And so what I'd like to do is get that part moving forward. So we have their award Phase Two Water. So Robert, is gross electric is the?
The recommended contractor.
And they're from Queensberry, New York?
Yes.
And you said that you were familiar with these guys, had you worked with them previously?
We have, yeah, in water and wastewater projects, so they're, they're familiar with what, the type of work that's required here. Control panels for pumps, skater, BFE drives.
I have a question.
Yep.
Now, say from, for someone perceiving circumstance, that the rebids come in and all of them are unacceptable, well, this and any, and we don't release, we just don't release the bid for the, we don't do the project. Does that money still, the electric money still come out of that, that four million or whatever, three point eight million? Or do we, does that negate everything?
No, it's, like, you remember when we did Phase One? We had three prime contracts there. We had the water meters, a separate prime, we had a GC, we had an electrical contract. So the way the funding works, each one of those contractors is independent. So a water meter project wasn't going to affect the well rehab project. So same thing here, you could, you could, you could do the work that the electrical contractors scope to do. Now, that'd be kind of a worst-case scenario, but if you didn't do the water, the rest of it, that piece would have gone down. Basically, the, the rebid that we recommend, took, chopped about twenty-five percent of the project off, which is what, you know, correlates with the, how high the bids came in.
Any thoughts on why the bids came in? And the reason I ask is, where I work, we just bid out a couple of projects and we prepared estimates that we thought were, you know, right on there, and the bids came in a great deal higher.
We've seen that across the board in our projects. You know, we've bid quite a few projects company-wide, and we've definitely seen, we're, construction bids were flat for years. They're, they're definitely going up. I asked the different project managers in our office, and they've, they said they've been seeing the same things in their projects. A couple of things that have affected it, definitely, there's more work out there. The other thing I've heard is the, the prevailing wage rates, which govern, you know, obviously these type of projects have climbed across the board, a dollar to two dollars an hour for the different trades. And there's, you know, just, if less, less contractors are more busy, you know, the economics of that is, you get higher bids.
Yeah, both are good questions. And in the workshop, we asked a version of you. I want to have more discussion here in the public forum, because we were, quite frankly, disappointed in the outcome of the bids. We saw so many numbers taking packages out of here that we thought we'd get a lot of competition and a lot of good numbers coming back in. What was weird, we had about a fifty percent return, meaning those that took packets, only fifty percent turned in. And so we did ask the engineers to sample a couple of firms that we knew took but didn't bid, and, because we were kicking that around ourselves, and it's been intriguing, you know, it's a system we're faced with. We have to take, we have to bid, and we have to take the lowest responsible bidder, but we're not forced to take a bid that's over our capacity to pay, so it's where the rebid comes up.
And with projects like yours that are funded with, you know, state and federal money, there's some minimal requirements for like bonding, insurance, that, you know, not everybody can bid on these projects. You know, there's a limited number of contractors that can, so. And, you know, that kind of limits the playing field a little bit.
Yeah, trying to see, looked like the specs, the plans, everything was correct, it wasn't that they found a problem, or it's just the numbers were way high.
Can we, can, can be explained to the board what was dropped from the contracts?
Yeah, I was, I was characterizing it there, but essentially that, the gross linear foot is, do you have the exact numbers in your?
Yeah, so in, in the letter that I gave the board, so went from fourteen thousand, four hundred feet to ten thousand, two hundred feet.
And Robert, this is consistent with the workshop of Thursday, it's just the actual, the actual measurements.
So the streets that are involved is the, the work on Route Nine. There's two portions. There was a portion here by the intersection, and then a portion further south. And then what Ed had described earlier, water main, you know, have useful life of eighty years, this one's thirty years old, it's the right size, so that's why that was put off to the side. So the water lane comes from Smith and up Benner, up all the way to?
Red Oak Estates. Red Oak Estates.
Yeah, it connects to Red Oak Estates, but that, that part of what, that's how that loop gets connected. But then it goes all from Zipster to, on Benner Road to Market Street. That was the line that was put in as part of that project, previous project. So that's how we, that's how we reduced the monit.
Less foot of main, less work on repaving?
Right, but then the detail for, for repaving the roads was revised to reduce the amount of tonnage of asphalt and base, you know, so that reduces the cost also for linear foot.
But we still have the, the curbing and, and the drainage, that'll be in place. So that's, that's good. So we did a lot of compromising, we gave the price down using numbers that were fairly accurate as far as unit dimensions, so they should come in.
Because what they're doing now is, we know what the market priced the various components at, so by reducing the components, we're pretty convinced we can bring it in where it needs to be.
So Robert, I have a question concerning the asphalt right now. As you know, petroleum prices are pretty low, so were there bids on the asphalt prices now or potentially what it might be when they start the project, which could potentially be higher?
Well, that's, that's true. So the, they're bidding today, but they're speculating on what the prices would be in the end of two thousand and sixteen, so this time next year, or even potentially?
So if it goes higher, they held to the prices that they're committed to now, even though it may go up X number of dollars per ton for?
Right.
Okay.
And within the, the amount that we, of the loan, are, if we see it built in, you know, not drastic, but enough to handle some influx and, but this, you know, to define a scope of work that's consistent and based on the real numbers and quantitative values of material and also labor, you know, that's pretty quantifiable, and that's what we're trying to do when we reduce the scope of work. And I just, can I just bring up also that the rebid went out today? And the bids, the new bids will be due by one o'clock on November sixth at the Village Building, at which time we'll open the bids again. So it's, it's a shorter amount of time. The drawings were turned around, the documents were turned around relatively quickly, so they're, they've been advertised and it's out there today for contractors to pick up.
Potentially, if it's a lot of the same guys, they have the numbers prepared as a matter of adjusting the quantities and all of that sort of stuff got you.
So bringing us back to the number four on the agenda there. Robert, CT Malve identified the lowest responsible bidder to disclose electric. I would put out for motion, we have some more discussion, we'll put a question, but just to put it in sequence, I would make a motion that, based on the bid opening and engineers' recommendations, that the Villas of Red Oak award a Phase Two prime electric to the gross, gross electric at Queensberry, New York. And I'd like to just cite their bid, I turned the page on my screen here, let's see. What was their bid amount, Robert? One eleven?
Seven eighty-seven.
Eleven, one hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any more discussion? We, we hit it pretty hard there. Just for me, procedurally, if we notify them of a bid, will they be instructed to deal with your office as to timing and coordination and?
Right, the basic procedure is just they'll get a notice of award. They'll have, they'll start the timeline for them to collect their insurance bonds. They'll, and we'll send them contracts for them to sign. They'll sign them, return all the documents, we'll review them, recommend signature if they're ready. You're the Village Attorney, you'll have to sign off. And the Funding Agency, Rule Development, will have to sign off also before it's effective.
So it's a little bit of time, a little bit of paperwork. C T M L, we meet every Friday with them and their staff on these administrative things, so I just wanted everybody to hear that part that, that'll happen. So we have a motion and a second and the other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Well, we still have Robert here. Jumping back to sewer, I skipped item number three here. Like you said, we are moving into the real world of this project and certain engineering plans have been reviewed by D E C and E F C up at the state level, but we have a, a need for some more engineering services that we need to put out in what's called an R F Q. It's, it's a bid process, excuse me, a qualification process where we look at options of firms. I would like to get that formally done too now, so what I look for is, we want to move forward on this quickly too, meaning we want to get the bid, the request out there and then entertain the firms that respond and then do our, our work that we have to do. Can I think of, again, we turn around, we, we publish the R F Q. Firms respond. You might remember from Phase One, the water, we get packets, mountains of, especially variation of resumes from firms and we go through and do our, our homework on it. So I would make a motion that the Villas of Red Oak put out R F Q, R F Q for Engineering Services Sewer, more design side of the world to get, get a, look at who's interested in the project. And with a return date, we'd like to have things done within, as soon as possible. Brent or Jay, do you have any thought on a timeline as far as what firm attorneys are on that before I firm up the motion?
Thirty days would be tops, but...
Yeah.
Because it's just basically, they have the documents, their resumes, they have projects, list of references for former clients.
What do you think, in line with our early discussion on a different item? Today is the nineteenth of October. Our next meeting we're saying is the ninth of November. Is that too short?
No.
It says lower than nineteen.
Yeah, it should be, it should be the ninth.
Oh.
I think that'd be a good time to get them.
The ninth or?
The ninth, not the nineteenth.
That way we would have the resolution to declare intention, be lead agent. If that goes forward, you know, once we clear that, then the motion's set to public hearing on secret, and we'd have the engineer, consider the engineer as well on that same date.
So our meeting is on Monday, that's the ninth. I guess we'd want them in by then. We wouldn't be prepared to review them by then, though. We'd have to have sit for a week or so and then, then we could look at, okay.
And then we'll still give us time, you know, between our declaration of intent to be lead agent in the public hearing on this, whenever we schedule it, it's assumed in December. So they should give us enough time to December to abort an engineering contract.
So then to restate the motion, authorize the Villas of Red Oak clerk to issue R F Qs, engineering services, sewer design for the sewer project with the return date of, end of business November ninth? Is it the second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, Robert, while you're up there. Uh-oh, he's sneaking away out of my peripheral vision. Yeah, I think the rest is up to us, so if you would like to head out. We'll see you Friday.
Yep. This time of year, I forget my coat.
Okay, yeah, right. When the first term's cold, you tend to leave your coat places because you're not used to taking clothes soon enough.
Well, it's supposed to be seventy tomorrow.
Is it upstairs?
All right, thank you. Number five, highway equipment, surplus equipment. We talked about this at the workshop Thursday night and we were all a bit mystified and I talked with them. Or we do apparently have an old, older push, push-type leaf vacuum. And the highway folks do not need it, do not use it. And they're convinced that they would never use it. It's got some design and some issues that doesn't work for us. So, and it's not a big ticket. I don't think they thought, the village spent twelve hundred bucks for about eight years ago somewhere in that timeline. So I was thinking it might be five thousand dollars, something. Just as an aside or an anecdotal aside, remember we use the county to move our surplus equipment? By that, I mean, we, they have a deal with absolute auctions where we move our equipment down there and they publicize it on the internet and they sell it and no cost, no charge back to us, the buyers pay, pay commissions and so forth, which is a great, great opportunity for us. We sold our, our older dump trailer recently. That's the one that they pull behind for recycling and so forth. And we got about sixty percent more money than we projected in our budgeting and so forth, so that was a good thing. So for the village, for government to move equipment into surplus and sell it, we need a motion. I'm convinced, I've never seen them use it, they'll, they'll never use it and it's in good enough shape to sell rather than scrap. So we did what we said we'd do at the workshop the other night, so Brent, you want to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we declare the giant commercial vacuum to eight horsepower, thirty-six inch upper pound walk behind vacuum as surplus.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number six, update parking lot purchase. Like you know, we extended the property sale agreement until October tenth. And in line with our discussions and so forth, council has set a closing date. Actually, it's written to Key Bank to set the closing date and we're waiting here back, but the wheels are turning. We're going to own that thing shortly, so all good. That's good stuff. Another one, number seven, we periodically talk about LED streetlights. And most recently, we know in the July timeframe, Central Hudson had P S C approve a tariff to enable municipal tariffs for us to start installing or somehow considering LED streetlights. Coincidentally, I got something from Central Hudson the other day. They're offering us to change out the streetlights that fail, break down, burn out, to LED within the parameters of the current tariff. Sounds like a good opportunity, but I want to raise something to the board. At the same time, we do know we have our essentially sodium vapors, which give that casty orangey-yellow look. And I feel like we do want to select or choose the intensity of the color spectrum of the LED we want to work with. I would love to get a smart version of the light that we could somehow some day control intensity, meaning if we could lower them at two A M to four A M or, you know, different things. So what I'm proposing is, I reached out to the Central Hudson rep that we deal with. I'd like to see what they offer. He told me they use a specific, like a four thousand, is it? It's not watts, of course, it's lumen, yeah. And I'm like, okay, I would like to see if we could model or somehow look at one somewhere. How, how much do they push directly down versus out and different things? So before we sign that resolution, I want to sit with that person and whoever else feels they want to, I'll fill you in. But something where we know, can we pick a spectrum? Are they all a cold blue light or can we pick a little warmer color? Can we pick the lower wattage and so forth? So I guess what I'm saying, I'd like to do a plan a little bit then just starting to throw a few in, as much as I want to get LEDs in there. So I think we'll sit with him before we sign that resolution.
I attended a seminar maybe a month ago talking about LED lighting. And the interesting thing was that even though the, you know, the wattages are lower because the light is brighter, sometimes you get a perception that it's brighter than it was when it was out there before. And he said in his experience is that you would get complaints. And not because you got sky glow and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't do anything in terms of where it actually broadcasts the light. It's just that the, the spectrum of light perceptively, it appears to be brighter and you get some people responding, reacting.
Yeah, which, so to correct that scientifically, we just buy a lower wattage fixture. So you, that's, I was reading up on it too and Brent and I, I don't know if we're all talking now, but The New York Times had a story about a week ago. Actually, take that back, it was just past Sunday. And they go into that, the, the intensity, the color and different things. So I want to explore what Central Hudson really is taking off the shelf with their offerings. We still, I still saw them ahead, but like have us...
I was surprised that this, that, that email that you sent around that, the, the savings weren't a little greater than, than what was projected. I, I thought it was going to be like a dramatic, you know, but it was a few bucks.
No, it was looking between sixteen and nineteen dollars per fixture.
Yeah.
Well, I think the two things, what I think is buried in there is when the P S C approved their new tariff, that the, the party negotiations and different things went on, it was, if you and I changed out one to LED, probably a different type of savings.
Well, I mean, you, you read the consumer information. You buy this LED that's a sixty watt and it uses one point six percent of, you know, you're going...
Yeah, yeah.
But also buried in there is, in the first part of the email, they come back and below is, the info that is online general option from them. For all munis, that is non-cost, non-cost change out to that. So they're burying the cost of installation in the rates.
Yeah, and I've written that new thing they sent.
Yeah, in the email you said, they buried the cost of installation in the rate.
And the replacement units are significantly more expensive than the other ones I would estimate.
But they last twelve years.
Sure.
Yeah.
But do we get charged when they replace the light?
No, that's the thing with that new, with the piece-by-piece replacement, they're offering to do that.
But even now, if, if us, one of these sodium vapor lights...
Oh, no.
Go out, we don't get charged?
No, it's part of the tariff. And that was the intriguing thing about the new piece-by-piece replacement to be, remember they were asking for like a buck? They're going to charge us to take the old Cobra head out. This still just change out the light, it looks like, but...
They're burying the cost.
Yeah, that's like, I still like to know, what are you going to give us? Show us something, you know? Because I don't want to put one up and then like people go, oh my God, yeah, so...
I like to, I like to attend that.
Okay, yeah, good. All right, the E V charging stations, another one of our ideas, let's see. You all will recall, the audience and the board and the Panda people, that a while back, we actually modified our zoning law to facilitate installation of electric vehicle charging stations. And particularly, we first geared it toward parking lots over a certain size that would have to install a certain number of electronic, electric vehicle charging stations. And that's underway in the one project being built up north of the village, in the village. But then, this is also, since the state of New York is promoting this, we were able to get two thousand five hundred dollars in grant-type funding from NYSERA. And we passed all that, but NYSERA was looking at our, our zoning change and they asked us to, to make one modification. I run it by Sam, our building inspector, and then briefly with our zoning council and then internally with Jay, who as we all know is a certified building inspector and got some comment. And we drafted this resolution, essentially it's saying that a person, remember how we also wanted to address if, if in your residential neighborhood, you yourself wanted to put in a charging station in your garage, how do we deal with that? And that's what NYSERA was looking for. They were like regular folks, not just people in the parking lots to be able to do it. So they asked us to make some clarification. So what we're saying is, we will, rather than adopt a separate permit specific to the installation of an electric vehicle charging station, the village will classify such installation as minor work, needing the same level as review as a large electrical appliance. So what this will do is it'll give the building inspector the, the right to say and how to deal with it. It's, what we would do is, it's a, we'd call it a type-two action, so we don't have to do secret anything. But what we'd say too is, the village, when we say large electrical appliance, like say you're buying a new electric stove, Jay, would you say, or something? You know, if you, if you're not doing major changes to your building, the building inspector could deem that he needs you to get an electrical inspection, you know, U L inspection, something like that. So that's how we'll ask Sam to address it in the, in the residential area. Jay, I don't know if you want to jump in and look at the text a little bit from your credentialing there, just to...
Yeah, what, what I'm seeing down here in terms of the, the minor work, I mean, you know, if you really think about it, say if there's an existing parking lot and the guy says, I think it would be a great idea, essentially the, the minor work requirement would be primarily to have a third-party electrical inspector make sure that all connections were, were, you know, completed in compliance with the N E C or whatever the appropriate code would be. It's, it's very minor, really, and especially if it was, if Brent decided to do one in his garage. It's almost like, you know, you call your electrician and have a two-twenty outlet put on, put in somewhere and it's just a matter of having it done by somebody who's competent, I think.
And our building inspector would ask for and say, I need U L inspection?
It, it would be some sort of, for, especially a commercial process where the public is at fault. It would be something that, just to provide safety, to say that it's done. You're not going to go up there and plug in your car and you're going to get electrocuted, you know, that everything is done properly. And it's a, a couple hundred dollars for an inspector to come in and issue a certificate, like a, it's little eight and a half by eleven piece of paper that says, there's the date, here's the inspection, here's what he inspected and here's his signature and it's all done appropriately.
So also this past week, I was reading something in The New York Times where there is a push, the electric cars, you know, the users are, are needing these stations and so having them in the public parking areas is great. And then if in our residential areas, it'd be great too. But we're saying, like we said at other meetings, this is not, we're not enticing or enabling folks to put up for pay charging stations in your garage just to be for your own use in our residential neighborhoods. So this is clarifying what people have to do.
They have several at SUNY New Falls, just for the record.
Oh, yeah?
A few of them over there, yeah.
I heard Steve say something over there.
Okay, so you're, you're saying minor work or, and then large electrical appliances? Now, you're saying like our electric stove is a large electrical appliance?
I think if a two-twenty, like Jay mentioned a two-twenty.
I would think if it, you know, like if, let's say for instance, if you were going to do some electrical work in your home, technically by the, the way that the New York State Code reads is that structural electrical plumbing work requires a building permit. I mean, which is not to say that a lot of it doesn't just happen, you know? But in terms of our resolution, I think it's safer for us to make a distinction between what requires or permit and what sort of flies below the radar. And I think that's why I had put that in there.
Are you formulating that question or did you?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know.
Okay, no, I didn't know if you were satisfied or...
Well, the electrical appliance, the electric stove, you're saying is going to need a building permit for a person to put an electrical stove in their house now?
No, no, we're saying if you're doing electrical work, there's a need to have the U L, there's got to be electrical inspection at the end. And in our main code, I don't have the main code of this, but we do what has to happen. What we're doing is just reforming or clarifying something here. I know, we're not trying to trick or entice or make anything broader, so. But let's look at it and see. But let's look at it, let's see. I guess it's the third paragraph, I.
I'm not sure if appliances is maybe the.
I think that's a, you know, you're going to get people saying the same thing. You mean, they're going to say, oh, I want to replace my stove, now I gotta go get a building permit to replace that stove?
I think the intent is is of electrical work that is beyond the scope of just something like changing out an outlet or something like that to say it's a larger project, you know. If you had a guy replacing your service panel or something like that, technically, you should be there.
Right, you know, a large electrical appliance to me is a walk-in freezer or something of that nature. Not a dishwasher, not a refrigerator, not, not, I'm not a standard, thank you, a standard appliance that goes into a house.
Yeah, let's think of, I'm thinking we could insert same level as wiring for a.
New wire.
As he has new wiring for, for an appliance.
Yeah. The appliance doesn't apply like a storyboard item, doesn't it, like a ELC or anybody?
The same permit as any new electrical work, regardless of if you need it for an appliance or just.
Jay, from your background experience, what do you see?
I I think somehow rather trying, trying to quantify that is sort of difficult, you know, looking at it, it's a little bit difficult to, you know, what what is like, say, what's large? Is it, like you say, is it a walk-in freezer or is it putting in ten new outlets in your house? Or, you know, where, where do you, I'm I'm not sure that that the language is exactly crystal clear. What what did, what did NYSERA ask for in terms of some sort of differentiation? What was the words?
Yeah, let me see if I can find something here. Let's see, let's see, they want, they gave two bullet points. Documentation that either one A or one B has been, one A is existing minor work processes. The municipality has identified EVSE installations as minor work, classifying it on the same level as large electrical appliance. Applicant has updated their permitting processes to define EVSE installations as minor work and that the permitting process for EVSE installations now consists of a simplified application and permitting fees consistent with similar minor work. And then or one B permitting template, that the municipality has adopted a separate permit specific to EVSE based on the model permitting template created by the Alternative Fuel Data Center, US Department of Energy.
Do they have a definition for large appliance? Does NYSERA have such a thing?
They don't cite one here.
Okay.
Let's see. Same installations as minor work, classifying on the same level as a large electrical appliance. Essentially, this, we we pulled that from their statement there.
Sure.
Village, they're a large.
Should we just put exactly what they had there? So what was their exact word, permit as is required for the installation of a new, what was their exact word?
It says permitting process while similar to other large electrical appliance installations for residential applications. Is that it?
The F, let's see.
Same permitting process.
Applicant has updated their permitting process to divine EVSE installations as minor work. And we said the village has determined to classify such installation as minor work. How about if we just dropped the whole electric appliance, just classify minor work?
I think that would be simpler, I mean, just say, it's just minor, that's it. And how about minor as classified by the village CEO? Would you let Sam be the arbiter of what minor is?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's classified by the CEO?
We're we're classified minor by the CEO or something like that.
What I'm thinking, does everybody have theirs in front of them? If we take the third whereas, and after the quote minor work, you just say as classified by the CEO, code enforcement officer. Leave the next whereas, leave the one after that, and then now therefore be resolved. I think we have to do something there. I'm suggesting that the board of trustees, the village whereby hereby classifies the installation of electric vehicles charging station as a minor work, requiring the same permit as required for the installation of any new wiring, any, any, any new, of new wiring? Because we do want them to get a UL, you know, somehow, not just be installing these things on their own. We just need to clarify that resolved statement there. Or same permit as required by the CEO. Right, what do you think?
Yeah.
So I would say one, two, three, the third whereas, we're changing, we're crossing out after the quote minor work, we just say as classified by the CEO, then after, now therefore be resolved, we would require the same permit as is required by the CEO.
Same permitting process.
Pardon me?
Same permitting process.
Same, requiring the same permit as is required, are you saying something different?
Yeah, I think it's, NYSERA said, mentioned about permitting process.
So it said same permit, same permitting.
Process. Can you read that again?
Now therefore be resolved that the board of trustees, the village whereby hereby classifies the installation of an electric vehicle charging station as minor work, requiring the same permitting process as required by the CEO. How we looking there?
Okay.
Cindy, do you have a number to give this?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
So I would offer the resolution, we're looking at the whereas, I think we've read through them. Changes would be in the third whereas, whereas rather than adopt a separate permit specific to the installation of electric vehicle charging station, the village has determined to classify such installation as minor work as classified by the CEO. And then as, let's see. And then in the, now therefore be resolved that the board of trustees, the village whereby hereby classifies the installation of electric vehicle charging station as minor work, requiring the same permitting process as required by the CEO. And then the last, be further resolved that notwithstanding classification as minor work, the installation of an electric vehicle charging station must still comply with all applicable requirements of the zoning law. So that brings it back to the mother change we made in that one. Does it make sense? I would offer as I read it, as motion to adopt the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
You'll send me a clean copy?
Yeah. Any other discussion?
Yes, it is all clean copy.
Yeah, any other discussion? No, on favor?
Bye.
Thank you.
Just real quick, Ed, before you move on?
Sure.
So I'll go back to two thousand fifteen, leave a block, we did advertise today. They'll start tomorrow for the bid advertisement and the bids will be due one o'clock PM on December eighteenth at the village building, at which time the bids will be open. You ready? This is two thousand fifteen, can we develop block?
Okay, had that already been determined?
Yeah, just restating it, are you just restating it? Yeah, okay, thank you. Let's see, we've got through the regular business, any other business from the board?
Uh, yes.
What's that, Mr. Archer?
Uh, on the.
Crosswalks?
Crosswalks.
Okay.
Those were supposed to be repainted. Well, reline.
What's it, the four corners were?
Yeah, we got the state to do the four corners. I forget where we left it with you or what we know, but, yeah, the state has taken a position, they do them every three years. And we lobbied and pushed and they said they would come back and do ours at the end of this construction season. They came on the day or two before Hartsburg Day, did the four corners and left. And I made every effort to track them down, find them, bring them back. And it's not our, contractor, not our job, they were gone and they didn't come back.
The reason I ask is, this evening I was coming home and between five ten, five fifteen, I was passing, or I came up on the crosswalk in front of the library and I had two people crossing over, they were going to the funeral. But I stopped and there was a pickup truck coming northbound. He didn't stop, but the lady started walking out since she saw me stop and they had to jump back out of the way because he, he didn't stop. But also I'd noticed that it's not very plainly marked anymore.
No, it's not.
So, you know, there in front of the library, they park right up to or on the crosswalk that when you're driving and coming northbound, you can't see it.
Yeah, that's a problem, especially this time of year when we're getting really dark. The the two factors.
That's one of the ones that's not well lit.
But I'll just refer back, that's why we're pushing this block grant. You know, we will have, if we get this funding, vertical illuminated signals that tell people. Because right now, they technically are in compliance, the DOT has that iconic raised sign, which our New York State drivers, like we've said, do not respect, do not see. And it's a real problem, it's, you know, we have to have a crossing guard on one ninety-nine because people don't stop. When one travels to other states where these laws are more respected, people stop at a heartbeat for even here.
The rapid flashing beacons look very similar, I mean, the signage is is almost identical, but it's lighted and they are wirelessly interconnected, so if either one is pushed, they both start flashing. I mean, so theoretically, you know.
Yeah, so I think, good point's taken, but it's, I think we're taking the proactive step, hey, it's a state highway. We can't go paint those, we were thinking joking once, should we do like a gorilla crosswalk painting, you know, like just go out after a certain hour and do it ourselves, but.
Well, let me ask you a question and, and this is hypothetically. We, we lobbied the DOT to change the configuration of the light, correctly? And they said, no, we won't do that because if we change it, somebody might get hurt. So I contend that if they don't paint those crosswalks out there, somebody could get hurt.
I agree, that's what we told them. They used to be on a two-year cycle, which is more in tune with what they can last, but three years is ridiculous, it's like terrible. So that's, my argument to them was, and so, but it's their budget, their world. And like I said, they did, the weird part is they said, okay, we will come back. They, yeah, we kind of forced by pushing some buttons. And they were there that one day, I was like, yes, they're back. And then they were gone and they just did what they deemed.
It seemed like the four corners was part of the contract when they fixed the light, you know, that was, when they put the sensor back in, that was part of that specific project contract, not a part of the rest of the.
But then, then you can use the argument, that's a state highway. We can't touch the state highway, so why aren't they doing it? And I know there's no money, but still, it's their highway.
It's it's a large tanker ship and trying to turn it is a, is a arduous process, I suppose, so.
Well, it's even a little more confusing because when I realized they were gone that day, I thought, well, maybe they just went to lunch. There was some maybe rational explanation. So I made a bunch of calls and the DOT contacted and I were, who's there? And they said, you sure it's not your guys painting the street? I was like, I'm sure it's not my guys, it's like big white trucks, I didn't read the name, it was a contractor. And I'm like, what do you mean, you guys don't know who's here? And I said, well, find them, so I called and bring them back. I figured maybe they're only fifteen miles away or something and they couldn't figure out who was even here. So I don't know if it's, because what they told me was they're bringing a contractor, they're painting Ulster and Farnes counties this year and they're going to bring them back on our request to, before they left the area to do our. And I specifically told them, four corners, crosswalk here, library, and then down toward the senior project, it was, they were bad ones. But it is, I just think three years is way too long, how can you paint in three years?
They've changed the, they have a number of qualities of paint. If you look on the DOT KI catalog, you see a number of different types of paint. And I think that probably in effort to save some money, they use the less expensive, you know, coatings out there and they just don't, they don't last between the the salt, because the DOT, according to, according to my last conversation with Chuck Walter, they do not use anything but salt anymore for the roads, they use nothing else. So between the salt and the cars and the plowing and everything else, the sun and, three years is a stretch.
Well, would be who was to contact, our representative over in Kingston or.
That's who I leaned on to get them to come back, meaning, I shouldn't say come back, to get a two thousand fifteen painting job instead of waiting, waiting another year. And then when the crews left, it was, it was a different sort of contact, they kind of pushed them here to get here, but.
So when were they supposed to paint it, but you got them here in two thousand fifteen?
Two thousand, it's a three-year deal and I think we were painted two years, we were like, we we expect to be painted this year in a two-year cycle, but they're saying, no, it's not going to be till next June. And so we said, no, it's not acceptable. And that's when they said, well, we'll go find a crew before they leave from the Ulster County side.
And that was always too late because we'll be plowing and.
Oh, yes.
You bet.
It's going to be spring again.
I was so happy when I saw it, I was like, wow, it was like the week before Hartsburg Day, it was like, wow, awesome. And the weird part is, I was going to walk up to the crews and talk to them, but I didn't. And I was like, I was like, oh, man.
Should have flipped him a hundred before you go.
Well, then, you know, not to, not to beat the horse to death, but then would, would it pay us to go back and look at like down there in front of the library like we did up at the Ol' Getty Station where we moved the no parking away from that area? So they have, they can see people there. Because right now, tonight when I came by, that car was parked right on the line, the walk line. So people standing there were behind the car, you can't be, they can't be seen. So eliminate that parking right there up to the line, move back thirty feet. So eliminate that parking right there up to the line, move back 30 feet.
We could look at it, I don't know if it's marked, to be honest with you, but probably it's all parking right through there. The other, while we're on the state, an interesting thing, when Brent and I were at that shared services grant convocation, there was a lot of chatter, everybody's given input on shared services, and it came up, and you guys might remember, our town, we buy shared highway purchase, highway salt purchases with the town we're at, and we're in current state contract, and the town, in its foresight, bought as much as it could in the timeline in the current contract, because we're being told that the salt price is going up 30%. And I was like, "Ah, that's crazy, what happened to salt that'd go 30?" And then, at this convocation we're at, some of the county people were saying that the state OGS, that's the Office of Government Services, that buys and monitors state contracts, they said they made some sort of mistake, and that's why the price is going up. So I reached out to Cahill's people after the meeting, and I said, "Look, I don't want to pay 30% more, because some state guy made a state contract mistake, so they're running that down for us." It seems silly, I almost couldn't believe it, I was like, I don't know if it was just like street talk, that, you know, but to go up 30% seems crazy change in price.
You mean, that guy's still got a job?
Well, that's the thing, it's like, you know, if you made a mistake yourself, gee, you know, rebid the contract, avoid it, the state's big enough, they can say. So I don't know where the truth lies, but, but we are looking at, once this salt shed runs out, 30% bump. So, but it goes to, we're complying, trying to stay in caps, we're staying in state contracts, and if they can't hold the price, you know, what's our salt budget line? Eight, 10, 12 thousand? It's a pretty good number, you know, so 30% is, yeah, it's a, you know, so it's another couple grand for us. If, so I'll find out, I actually called Cahill's people again this morning, said, "Hey, I'm going to a meeting tonight, I'd like to know what you found out," but didn't get back to me, but, so, but it's, we're at the victim, it's that, you know, we're playing by the rules. Like Cindy mentioned, I don't know how Latini or why Latini would lose the state fuel contract, but we buy it up, what that means is we buy our fuel oil from them, for the buildings, and I guess this is the only place now, but, so we'll have to figure that out, but see what's up. Good price, the only good point is, prices have come down, I don't know, it's, what knows about a little spike again? Because we did play with going on that cooperative buying again, and, I don't know, but, anyway, that's general business from the board. Any public comment out there in the public?
Oh, that walkway thing, if the state wants to cancel the walkways for a year, let them do it. If it's not, if it's not stretched, aren't there, there's no walkway. That was our problem.
Yeah.
Can't enforce a rule if they don't take care of it, so just tell them, "We understand, we're going to cancel it for a year, if you come back and paint it for two more years, go back in again, of course, we'll confuse people a little bit, but that's okay."
Yeah. Thank you. Anything else? Let's see, we need to make a motion to pay some bills, is there any?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, Mr. Brent, are you ready to work?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion there, will you adjourn this evening's meeting?
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody, thank you.
Best motion, aye.
Thank you, sir.